Just came on and we are ready here when you are ready, Mayor.
Wait for his video. All right. Great. It looks like everybody's here. I am Mayor Courtney Shipley. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 15th, City Commission meeting. First, we'll do roll call. Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Finkeldie.
Here.
Commissioner Littlejohn.
Here.
Commissioner Sellers.
Present.
Mayor Shipley, I'm also here. And I'm going to let Sherry give us a little verbiage about our executive session that we're going to go into here.
Thank you, Mayor. The meeting starts with an executive session tonight. When the motion is made to recess into an executive session, the commission will leave this Zoom meeting and go into a separate Zoom meeting. When the time scheduled for the executive session has elapsed, the commission will return to this meeting and reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, do we have any motions?
This is Commissioner Finkeldie. I guess I wanted to be sure before I made the motion. Are we going for 60 minutes, which is in the motion, which would have the meeting starting at six instead of 5:45?
This is Sherry Redeman, City Clerk. That is what was listed on the agenda and advertised at the top of the agenda that we'd start at six.
Commissioner Finkeldie, thank you for that. And I'll go ahead and move that we recess into executive session for approximately 60 minutes to discuss a personnel matter involving a city employee pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA 754319B1. The justification of the executive session is to protect employee privacy. The City Commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with Resolution 7388 at the conclusion of the executive session.
Vice Mayor Larson, second.
Mayor Shipley, I have a first and a second. Commissioner Finkeldie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Littlejohn.
Aye.
Commissioner Sellers.
Aye.
Mayor Shipley, aye. That passes five to zero. We will now go into our executive session.
We've had an executive session and there's nothing to report. But let's go ahead and do a roll for Sherri Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Finkeldai.
Here.
Commissioner Littlejohn.
Here.
Commissioner Sellers.
That's it.
Mayor Shipley also here. And so I think what we would want to do is go back and let Porter do his regular explanations for the public about the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I just want to share a few housekeeping items for this Zoom meeting tonight. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting unless you are speaking. The chat function for the meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating in the meeting, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, please send me a chat. Please remember to state your name each time you speak for the benefit of those participating remotely. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. And now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Shipley.
Mayor Shipley, and now we'll go ahead. Sherri gave us some explanation for executive session earlier, but she has some other kinds of announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. These are just some, you know, procedure guidelines for the virtual meeting. Commissioners and staff, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. When a motion is made, the mayor will call on commissioners individually to provide their vote, then announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. When the mayor calls for in-person public comment, individuals should raise their hand to indicate they wish to speak. Staff present will direct you to the podium following social distancing and safety protocols. Please state your name before speaking and comments will be limited to three minutes. Individuals participating via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. The raise hand function may appear in different places on your Zoom menu depending on the device you are using and which version of Zoom you have. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name. Again, comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Mayor Shipley. Thank you, Sheri. Mayor Shipley, now we can move on to approving the agenda. Would any commissioners like to reorder or supplement the agenda?
This is Vice Mayor Larson. I moved to approve the agenda. Oops, I forgot you got to do the look. Sorry. Sorry there, Mayor.
So, oh, sorry. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Commissioner Finkel, a second.
Mayor Shipley, I have a first and a second. Vice Mayor Larson.
I.
Commissioner Finkeldie.
Hi.
Commissioner Littlejohn.
Hi.
Commissioner Sellers.
Hi.
Mayor Shipley, I. That passes five to zero. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that's been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. Are there any items to be pulled from consent by commissioners?
This is Commissioner Finkel. I'd like to pull C8E.
Very good. Any other items from commissioners? Mayor Shipley, Sheri, there's a lot of people here now. Do you see anyone out there who might want to, from the public or there in the audience, who might want to pull something from the consent agenda?
Is there anyone that wants to comment on items that are on the consent agenda? If you are on Zoom and would like to provide comment on any items on the consent, please raise your hand or turn on your video and let us know. There's no items to pull, Mayor.
Right. With that, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of C8E.
This is Vice Mayor Larson. I moved to approve the consent agenda with the exception of C8E.
Commissioner Finkel.
Commissioner Sellers, second.
Mayor Shipley, I have a first and a second. Vice Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers.
Hi.
Commissioner Finkeldie.
Hi.
Commissioner Littlejohn.
Hi.
Mayor Shipley, I. That passes five to zero. Commissioner Finkeldie, you pulled item C8E.
Yes, Commissioner Finkel, I. CAD is the series of agreements related to the general fund and special alcohol fund. And most of those agreements, all of those agreements except one have a pretty detailed action plan or steps in which the money's going to be used. But the one on LCS does not. And I was just wondering if that is coming or how, you know, with the new, with the plan that we're looking at coming out in May and so forth. Just a little concerned about not having details for that like we have with the rest. Danny, you can help me on that.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Danny Walters with Planning and Development Services. Yes, we, since we were proposing level funding for LCS for this next year, we did just go with the same, basically the same framework for the agreement that they had done in the past since it was for general operations for the shelter. We did add some information about the joint resolution with the county as well as referencing the strategic plan for reporting, but we can certainly enhance this agreement. If you're looking for some more measurable metrics for the shelter, we're happy to kind of take that back to the to the drawing board and get some more detailed information for you on that.
Commissioner Finkel, I, you know, I think I'd be interested in that. I don't know about the other commissioners. You know, possibly another alternative would be, you know, I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on measurables if we think they're going to change when the new plan comes out in May. I mean, maybe it's refund something now and then look at the rest of the funding afterwards. I mean, I, you know, again, I don't know exactly what we expect when the, when the plan comes out from KU in May, but I guess I want to leave our options open there to make sure, you know, we're accomplishing what we want with our, with our funds.
This is Danny Walters with Planning and Development Services. Yeah, we can, we can structure it any, any way that you would like to see. I do think it's probably safe to say that when the, when the study does come out, emergency shelter is still probably going to be a pretty big part of that. LCS is the emergency shelter right now, so that's kind of where we're at and that's kind of how the, the decisions were made. We do have representation here today from LCS if, if there were any questions for the agency. Melissa Botts and Isabel Johnson are both here. But, but yes, I, we're happy to do whatever you guys need for us to do on this agreement, so.
Well, Commissioner Finkel, I, again, and maybe that is as simple as that, that says this agreement is for emergency sheltering. I know the, I mean, the LCS does good work. They do lots of different things. And, and of course, this just says it's general operating, so it could be used for lots of different things. I mean, if it's used for, I mean, even if it just said, we're using this for emergency sheltering or a certain amount of emergency sheltering or something like that. Again, I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here. I just want, I just look at it compared to the other agreements and I just want to be sure we're getting what we're paying for there.
Danny Walters, absolutely. We can, we can add some of that, that information into there and then bring it back to you.
Mayor Shipley, any other questions or comments?
This is Commissioner Sellers. Just a quick clarification in section three and dispersment of funds under subsection B one and two where it says the request. So by March 1st, we would saw, albeit Commissioner Finkel die's point, the amount was for $290,000, but we wouldn't be, we would, they would receive the first half of that funding by March 1st. Correct?
This is Danny Walters. Yes, that, that is correct.
And this Commissioner Sellers, so long, so I guess to Commissioner Finkel die's point, if there was some more, depending on the language of, and of use of funding and that need, there's a possibility that, you know, when we go back to look at this, there's a possibility that, that first half of funding could potentially be suffice. And may not need the second half of funding, but just thinking out loud, but as long as I know that the first, they would at least get that first half of funding to sustain them, then that would be, then they have that record of that then, or we have a record of that then.
This is Danny Walters. Yes, we could do that. We could also have them submit a report of kind of where they're at and what their accomplishments have been for that first half of the year as well with, with that first, after that first draw is done.
Now, this is, this is Vice Mayor Larson, and I would appreciate maybe some more detail. Commissioner Finkel, I had indicated, I think that would be good if they could provide a little bit more. And as far as with the, how the homeless initiative or the report that we're going to be receiving maybe in May, my guess is, is that it's going to take some time to implement that. And that's something that could be considered for the 2023 budget. The information that's in that report probably more apt to be considered that for the 2023 budget versus the 2022. But I do agree that, you know, we, it would be nice to see them provide a little bit more detail as to how they're spending that money and that it should be focused on emergency sheltering only.
Donnell, does that give you enough? Do you have everything you need?
Danny Walters, I think so. Yeah, I think that we can bring something back to you in March that, that kind of hits on the, on the points that you've brought up.
Great. All right. Thank you. We take some public comment on this though, in case there is any, or again, you did say Melissa and Isabel are here in case they would like to say anything. You're welcome. I can't see it, so.
Is there a public comment on this item here? Okay.
Nothing, Sheri?
No, I just, I would like to be clear on the motion.
Okay.
Because it's to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. So do we, if DNA can respond and if we need to adjust that to not include.
Danny Walters, Planning and Development Services. Yeah, I think if the motion says kind of what it reads with the exception of Lawrence Community Shelter, I think that that, that should work and then we'll bring that one back on its own.
All right, Mayor Shipley. Just want to double check here. We didn't skip anybody on the Zoom that wanted to make public comment. There was no one there for public comment on this item. Okay, do I have a motion then?
This is Commissioner Littlejohn. I did see that Isabel Johnson.
Oh, good. I'm sorry, I can't see everyone, so I.
Sorry, Mayor. I can see them, but if they don't raise their hands, it's hard for me to know if they're providing comment or just listening. So go right ahead, Isabel, if you wanted to provide comment.
Oh, thank you, everyone. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to listen to what is being said and if there's anything that you would like to add in terms of how we report out and accountability measures, that we welcome those and we welcome your feedback.
Mayor Shipley, thank you. All right, I think let's check and see again. Is there anybody who wants to make a motion?
This is Commissioner Finkel die. I'll go ahead and move to approve the 2022 homeless and housing issues funding proposals and authorize the city manager to execute agreements for the 22, 2022 general fund and special alcohol fund awards with the exception of the, the general fund agreement with LCS, which will be brought to us, back to us in March.
Vice Mayor Larson, second.
Vice Mayor Finkel, second.
Mayor Shipley, I have a first and a second. Commissioner Finkeldie.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Hi.
Commissioner Littlejohn.
Hi.
Commissioner Sellers.
Hi.
Mayor Shipley, I. That passes five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Next is public comment. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. Sheri, is there anyone there in the audience who would like to comment on a general public comment, not an agenda item?
Yes, there is, Mayor. Go right ahead.
My name's Michael. I've been here a number of times recently. I had a nice presentation prepared tonight to talk about Cora and how the city responds to it. The only thing I'm going to note from that presentation is that there is nine counts submitted to the DA on the city and LPD about the way they handle core responses. But what I'm specifically going to address today is this afternoon, I've had an extensive correspondence with the city talking about what charges are assessed in the processing of core requests. As a part of this, I've gone through and researched just about every law and statute there is available to this, going back to 1991, the ordinance 6237 that the city passed back then, which discussed about the actual cost to the city, including staff time. Didn't say staff benefits, said staff time. So I took a look at what was sent to me, ordinance 7025, which doesn't address staff time. That just amended 1903. That was sent to me by city staff in rebuttal to this. But that really didn't address staff time. So let's look what actual city code says. Article nine specifies that in cases not covered by subsection A, which subsection A is the open records request, be charged a rate based on the actual hourly rate of the person conducting the search. Now, they say they can charge a 10% fee. The attorney general disagrees with that, but we'll argue that another time. So I went around the state. Well, I didn't go around, but I looked around the state to find all the different core charges I could find across the state through state agencies, local agencies, unified school districts, cities, police departments, sheriff's departments, anything you can think of. I could not find a single hourly rate charged in the state of Kansas above $50 an hour. And that's for a lead attorney review. A police officer was paid $90 an hour. Even in our own core statute, it talks about the time being paid. Doesn't talk about the time for the golf membership to be paid. Doesn't talk about the time plus the company vehicle to be paid. Doesn't talk about the time in the corporate credit card to be paid. It talks about the actual time spent processing the request. I am once again asking that the city and the Lawrence Police Department reevaluate this request and resubmit it back to me with an appropriate charge listed that I would be happy to pay. I'm happy to pay an appropriate charge. I will not be extorted by this city to get records that I'm entitled to. That's my three minutes tonight.
Mayor Shipley, thank you. Is there anyone else there in the audience who would like to make a general public comment?
No, Mayor.
Excuse me, Mayor. This is Commissioner Littlejohn. I see a couple, Ron Gacius and Crisper.
Yeah.
I was just responding to not hearing the audience. Now we'll move to the virtual comment.
Yeah, Sheri, go ahead and call on the people that are in the Zoom for me.
Thank you. Ron Gacius.
Thank you, Ron Gacius, a member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. It, I don't think I have a current agenda in front of me, so I don't know if my comment needs to be directed to a specific item or if it's a general comment. I'd like to comment on any possible changes to the capital investment budget. Is now an appropriate time to do that?
The item we'll be speaking about later is not necessarily about specific budget items that we've already passed or will pass, but more about the framework. Is that what you were going to comment on?
Well, let me just make my comment and if it applies,
we'll stop.
Then watch the discussion later. Fine. If not, then maybe I'm raising a different point.
Thank you.
And, and my, and my point is this. I think that one of the considerations that the city should look at when you're making changes to your capital investment budget, if you're adding to it, or if you've got some money that's available because something was canceled and now you're going to redistribute funds, or if you've got federal funds coming, coming through, what, whatever is the happen, happens, whatever is the circumstance. One of the metrics we need to look at is how are you impacting affordable housing issues? And can you take advantage of any of those funds to help us move the needle on our affordable housing goals? And let me give you an example. We had a proposal that we didn't fund this past year from solid construction. And they were looking for money to, they were looking from money from the trust fund to pay for a road extension. And the completion of that road extension would create 30 lots, some of which were targeted to become part of our permanent affordable housing inventory, I, inventory, either by being sold to our not-for-profit developers or by solid construction participating and agreeing to place the home in the housing trust. Great opportunity lost because no one seems to want to pay for a road extension. And I know what the general rules are, but if you're looking for ways that you can make a difference. And, you know, almost every one of the commissioners that I'm looking at right now has asked me at some point in time or said to me at some point in time, if there's anything we can do to help, you know, but it's real hard to come up with more money. Well, if you're looking to put some capital investment somewhere where it can make a difference in the community, please add as one of the metrics you're looking at, the possible impact on affordable housing. If there are small investments we can make in infrastructure around the community that lose If there are small investments we can make in infrastructure around the community that loosen up a few lots that could be made available in partnership with our not-for-profit builders, I think that'd be a fabulous thing to do with some of those dollars. We simply don't have enough dollars in the housing trust fund to take care of these kind of tertiary issues that might come up. That hasn't been what we've been funding in the past, but there sure is a good opportunity there, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't, we don't normally comment, but I would just encourage you to stick around for our third agenda item because it may not be specifically about that, but it will certainly have an effect and I know you'd be interested. So thank you. Sheri?
Chris Berger.
There we go. Hi, Commissioners. Just want to say hello and welcome to the new Commissioners in particular and raise kind of your role on behalf of the general public. You, I'll say just from experience that historically every Commissioner will eventually believe that their role is to manage the city, manage the city as if they're a chief executive of the city as opposed to the only five people on behalf of the residents of Lawrence who can actually have an impact upon the city itself. And the simplest and cleanest example of that is found in each of the memos that you receive. Each of the memos mentions a fiscal impact, but that fiscal impact itself is always and only in regard to the fiscal impact to the city without any reference at all to what the ordinances or regulations do to the people within the city, the properties within the city, or as Ron was just talking about, the affordability of housing within the city. And it's a simple thing to do as far as fall into the the belief that you are executives of the city because that's what you hear every single day from the people within the city as they speak to you. I would just ask that you reserve yourself as you hear what people say and what the city tells you and remember that you five are the only ones that we have in order to address issues with the city on our behalf. And I thank you all for running. Congratulations for winning. And I wish you success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri, is there anyone else on the Zoom who's interested in general public comment?
And no one else has indicated they wish to speak, Mayor.
Okay. In that case, we will go ahead and move on to our work session. The work session provides an opportunity for the city commission to discuss items in greater detail. As a general practice, the commission will not make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Work session topics are eligible for live public comment. Each person will be limited to three minutes. And I believe this would be Britt Crumcano.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I am Britt Crumcano, the city's economic development director. I am also the champion for the prosperity and economic security outcome area of the city's strategic plan, which is what I'm going to be talking to you about tonight. I also have a couple of guest speakers that will be briefly talking about their work related to some of these efforts. Before I start, I wanted to kick things off with an overview video. So Porter, if you're ready, I'm going to let you take that away.
I'm also prosperity and economic security outcome champion for the city's strategic plan. Our outcome will best comes through collective prosperity.
And a vibrant, sustainable local economy. A strong local economy has a number of benefits for our community, including ensuring we have good jobs and careers to attract and keep talent, increasing city revenues to fund needed amenities and services for our community and preserving our culture and historic identity. One of the key factors we're focusing on to ensure the health and resiliency of our economy is growing and supporting commercial and industrial development. This type of property is one of the most efficient ways to broaden our city's tax base and meet our quality of life goals. That's because commercial and industrial real estate has a property tax assessment rate of 25%, while residential property is assessed at 11.5% and exempt property is not assessed and therefore does not pay property taxes. Currently, Lawrence is dominated by the residential and exempt real estate classes, which are the least efficient at bringing in tax revenues. Approximately 71% of real estate in Lawrence is residential. To alleviate some of the burden on residential, we need to grow our most efficient real estate class, which is commercial and industrial. So it can be a greater proportion of our property tax base. Within the next five years, the economic prosperity and security outcome will be working towards strategic plan strategies focused on retaining, attracting, growing, and expanding commercial and industrial businesses. These strategies include establishing Lawrence as the most business-friendly community in the region and increasing and focusing resources to generate entrepreneurial and tech-related company growth. Specifically, that means concentrating on attracting more commercial and industrial capital investment. This can include developing a new industrial park, developing the KU Innovation Campus, or transforming the riverfront into an economic asset. Retaining, supporting, and growing our existing corporate assets, redeveloping underutilized city lots, and developing and supporting entrepreneurship. We anticipate that these strategies will help us move the needle on several of our progress indicators for the strategic plan. You can check in on our progress at any time by reviewing our strategic plan progress indicators online at www.loranceks.org/strategic-plan.
I want to thank Porter and his communications team for putting together that video. And that gives you kind of a overview of the talk for tonight on prosperity and economic security. I'm going to share my screen. Oh, Porter, it looks like you're going to have to let me share my screen.
You should be able to share it now.
Thank you. Okay, so again, tonight we're talking about prosperity and economic security. This is one outcome of the Lawrence Strategic Plan. Just to recap this. And hold on just a second, I'm going to get my slideshow going. So to recap prosperity and economic security, the city of Lawrence fosters an environment that provides all people and businesses the opportunity for economic security and intentionally acknowledges, removes, and prevents barriers created by systemic and institutional injustice. Our community succeeds because of collective prosperity and a vibrant, sustainable local economy. One of the things that I would like to touch on, especially since we do have two new Commissioners, at the same time that the city's strategic plan was being developed in 2020, we were doing a community economic development strategic plan as well. We had engaged the Ernst &amp; Young Economic Development Advisors to help us in guiding this for some recommendations for economic development. And at the end of the process, they produced some recommended strategies. This was after a multitude of public engagement sessions. And they also said, this is, these are just recommended strategies. It's now up to you to take these and do what you want and what you will. It is also a 20-year roadmap for economic development. So I'd like to kind of keep that in mind. There were three main goals. To diversify the economy, to strengthen the tax base, spur entrepreneurship, and offer expanded career pathways, create policies, programs, and partnerships that enhance the character and culture of the community, and make intentional innovative investments to make our economy more sustainable, connected, and inclusive. So one of the challenges that I have had is how to align these two plans. And what what I have done is where they do line up, I think that makes for our short-term priorities. Short-term being the next three to five years. And so that's really what I'm going to talk to you about tonight. So, short-term priorities, my recommendation would be to prioritize our resources and strategies that support and grow commercial and industrial asset base. These include new capital investments, retaining, supporting, and growing our existing corporate assets, supporting and encouraging entrepreneurship. And one of the reasons why I'm doing this is because commercial and industrial assets are one of the most efficient and actually least painful ways to expand the tax base and meet our quality of life goals. We really have to have the revenues to be able to pay for all of our amenities as well as social services. And commercial industrial assets is very efficient in doing that. So, you know, we can, we can, there's one of three ways we can increase our tax revenues. We can increase taxes. We can increase fees. Nobody really likes either one of those. Or we can increase our commercial industrial tax base. So since Lawrence is heavily invested in residential and exempt real estate, it is imperative that we concentrate our efforts on growing the commercial and industrial real estate assets. And here is a little graph to kind of show you. We're very out of balance when it comes to our real estate assets. We are very dominated by residential. They make up about 71% of our asset pie, if you will. And next we have permanent exempt, not temporary exempt, but permanent exempt. We are a community with a lot of government entities, school entities, that sort of thing. And those are permanently exempt properties, so they're not paying into the tax base. A commercial and an industrial slice of the pie is only 12%. And yet, if you look at the assessment rates of all of these, you can see that it is over double the assessment rate of the residential assessment rate. And of course, exempt properties have no assessment rate because they're not paying into, into the property taxes. So when you look at our real estate tax revenues, 70% are coming from residential and 26% are coming from commercial. So residential is really carrying the bulk of the real estate tax burden in Lawrence. I would like to clarify, again, I'm talking about permanently exempt property. That is the property that makes up, again, government buildings, school buildings, that sort of thing, university-owned property. Over 15% of that, and we're talking about temporary exempt, and I think this has been a little confusing. Temporary exempt usually has to do with some kind of short-term assistance that's being offered as an incentive. And that makes up a very small part of even a percentage of our local real estate. In addition, there's always a time limit on it. Typically, in in Kansas, when it comes to property tax abatements, there's a 10-year limit. And then there's usually never given 100%. Very rarely do we give 100% tax abatement. So what that means is even during the incentive period, we're still getting some kind of tax revenue. I'm going to, I'm going to highlight one of our property tax abatements that just recently came off of their incentive period. And this is the Grandstand Main Building. And as the graph shows, they did get an abatement. I believe it was approximately 65%. And then the rest they had to pay. So over the 10-year period of their property tax abatement, they paid almost $577,000 and then over a million dollars, a little over a million dollars was abated. So they did, they were still paying into the the pie. And then after they get done with the incentive period, that's when the property goes fully on the tax rolls. So in the case of property that's been redeveloped or new development, that's when the real payoff comes. That's, I like to look at these types of projects as a long-term investment. Typically, during the incentive period, we are getting a payback. It may be modest, but the real payback is after the incentive period expires. So it's a great way to grow commercial and industrial tax bases. This particular project had other benefits. It was, it was very successful in job creation and it paid pretty good wages as well. So this just serves as a really good example because it just recently came back on the tax rolls. So here's kind of a summary of the priority work that we'd like to focus on. Streamline and develop the development code and permitting process. Our planning team is already involved with that. Target commercial industrial growth and entrepreneurship. Develop a strategic marketing plan to attract capital investment for commercial real estate assets. Focus resources that grow the commercial industrial tax base and provide additional economic benefits. Grandstand, I think, was a good example of that. And grow local women and minority business ownership. I'm not going to read these, but this kind of shows how this all frames out in terms of the city strategic plan. The commitments are all from the city strategic plan. The strategies are as well. And then the priorities. And I've got other charts here that go over each one of those as it relates to the community area. So again, I'm not going to go into detail on that, but just to show you how it kind of fits in the framework. So to measure progress, we're going to look at a couple, we're going to look at data from a couple of different perspectives. And I call it leading and lagging data. This particular outcome area is a little different from some of our other outcome areas in the sense that we have to work very strongly and rely on collaborative partnerships throughout the community. Economic development is all encompassing. It's also such a big thing for the community that no one entity can be totally responsible for economic development. We really all have to come together and work together as a team. It really does take the entire village to do economic development. So because of that, we're going to have what is called leading data, which we are forming several work groups, working groups, if you will, to work specifically on these strategies. A lot of them have been working, they're existing groups that have been working on them. But they're really going to be talking about what they're doing to advance that particular strategy that they're working on. So that is more real-time data. It's more boots-on-the-ground type of information about what's happening. The other is lagging data, which really comes primarily from third-party sources, such as the census. It's important, I think, that we do look at this data. It typically does have a lag time. And so a lot of times it can't be looked at in real time, but I think it's important that we look at that and keep that within context as well. A lot of times, lagging data, it'll tell you the big picture. It won't necessarily tell you the why of the big picture, but I think it's still a very important thing to be looking at. So with our performance indicators, there's six out of the 10 that I think we really want to focus on. The first one is the percent of businesses rating Lawrence as a good or excellent place to do business. We've never done a business survey. We are doing our very first one this year. Staff is currently working on that. And so once that is done and out there and we have results back, then we will have a baseline to start working on that. Also, we want to look at targeting, target industry employment growth. We are going to rely heavily on our partners, the Chamber and the KU Innovation Park, also known as BTBC. They are, they are very good at helping us grow those jobs. And so we're going to try to align this metric with what they're doing. We can also look at census data. I think this is very interesting, but again, there's a little bit of a time lag. So you're looking at it and you're, you're kind of looking at it in hindsight, but I think, again, it's important to look at. Average calendar days from permit application to issuance for commercial development. Our Planning and Development Services team is heading this one up. In 2020, it was a 40-day average and the target, oh, the two-year annual average target is for 35 days. So more to come on that. Women and minority business ownership rate. We definitely want to increase the number of minority and. We definitely want to increase the number of minority and um and women owned business, businesses. Uh the goal is to increase it by two percent annually. And then also meet or exceed the five year average for our university peer communities. When the Ernst &amp; Young team did their strategy recommendations, they came up with a list of forty peer communities. We can't uh research every one of them, so we've narrowed that down to a group of um of our neighboring communities, but because it's important, I think, to look at who is around us and how they're performing. But also our university peer communities, those across the Midwest that are more like our community. So we're going to be looking at that as well. Um the other thing is we can actually look at data. There's a, a database, a wonderful database, very robust called DataAxel. And that gives us very detailed data on women and uh minority owned businesses with the caveat that ethnicity, they, they uh measure, they use ethnicity as a proxy for minority. So uh but there are a lot of detailed data on um various ethnic owners within the, the city of Lawrence. And we can get very detailed uh with the city as well as with our peer communities. So that's where this metric is coming from, the twenty twenty one data. Uh they also do verify records, so that means every year they're calling. And I can pull this only on the verified record. So we're getting, I think, a, a pretty accurate perspective on our community. The five year rolling average of total commercial building permit value. This is really going to help us, I think, kind of track our, our commercial and industrial capital investments. Uh it's one of the metrics that I think we can look at. Again, the planning and development services team would be heading that up. Uh they're going to be looking at the five year rolling average from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. It was over two hundred and eight million dollars. And then as a benchmark, we'll have to determine that later. And then the percent of private dollars leveraged to public dollars, this is a metric we kept track of uh for a long time now through the annual economic development report when it comes to the projects that we're giving incentives to. And we'll continue to do that and look at that. Uh I would like to also start looking at maybe how strategic marketing dollars uh relates to new private commercial investment. So that is to be determined and developed. Um again, I mentioned that this is a team sport. Uh when Ernst &amp; Young provided us their recommendations, I think they had a, a twenty one different strategies. Ideally, we would have a working group formed around every single strategy, boots on the ground group. Um in reality, that um there's some groups that have a better start and they have more advocates behind it. So there's groups that are, have a little bit ru- better running. The other thing is uh because we're looking at five years and the economic development strategic plan is a twenty year plan, we may not be able to tackle everything at once. But ideally, we would be really focusing in on these different strategies. So I just wanted to kind of let you know about this approach. It's actually a really different approach to economic development. Traditionally, economic development is top down. Where you're having a city or county or some kind of government entity dictate to the community what we're going to do. This is where we've really went out to the community and we've engaged them and we've asked them to partner with us and help us in terms of meeting um strategies, defining strategies and tactics and, and meeting these goals. So with that, uh I have invited a couple of guest speakers. Uh I have Kyle Johnson with the Douglas County Connections Opportunities and Resources for Entrepreneurs, that's CORE for short. Um I would like him to kind of talk a little bit about this group um and how, what they're working on kind of lines with these short term priorities. And then I also have Kevin Kelly from the Peaslee Technical Training Center, which is going to, he's going to talk about the Crunch Entrepreneurship Support Center. And then uh again, how all of this is helping us drive entrepreneurship. Um and then after those presentations, we can open it up for questions if you'd like. So um at this point, I'm going to stop sharing. And I would like to invite Kyle to uh talk a little bit about CORE.
Thanks a lot, Britt. Um nice to see you all commissioners. Thanks for your time. Um maybe just to provide some continuity from Britt's presentation, uh the chart with all the bubbles um where entrepreneurship was one of them. There's um, there's a part of Britt's different working groups. Uh entrepreneurship is one of those. And CORE's entrepreneurial strategy working group and that uh and, and Britt's entrepreneurial strategy group are one in the same. So there's already some alignment there. And this CORE group has been meeting for about a little over eighteen months, maybe, working on developing um a really thorough strategy. And now we're moving into this implementation phase. I'll just start maybe briefly with a quick um intro video to CORE. We, we taped some of this footage uh at our kickoff event in the middle of last year.
More entrepreneurship is a linchpin in creating jobs and creating a more robust economy. A community that has a robust entrepreneurial ecosystem is one that's going to have a rich cultural experience for all of the constituents within that community.
This community has substantial needs and economic development is a part of the answer to almost all of that. As if these entrepreneurs needed more pressure.
Entrepreneurship is really tough. It's grueling. Entrepreneurs need a lot from their communities.
Most job creation in most communities happens locally. So how do you get that started?
We're trying to strengthen the entrepreneurial ecosystem so that it's more welcoming to entrepreneurs. And so that the resource providers are better able to service those entrepreneurs.
Got to help the businesses to grow the businesses so they can get in the game and help other businesses grow.
We're building the pieces that make entrepreneurship in Douglas County easier.
So that's really what it is all about, is making entrepreneurship easier in Douglas County. Uh now I'll just give a quick uh overview here. Um so I, I know you, you've probably seen this slide before, as if you've heard me talk about this. But basically, we create a lot of college grads, but we don't have jobs for most of those grads. We, we produce talent, but we struggle to retain it. So what are these ecosystems where our talent goes have that we don't? Uh the short answer is they have strong entrepreneurial ecosystems. And the OECD has done some really key research on this topic. Their report um produced maybe, I think, around twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Uh serves as a great guide for that. They study the factors that enable entrepreneurial ecosystem building. I think in particular Boulder um is probably the ecosystem that we need to try to model. Some of their characteristics after when we, when we take this approach for Lawrence and Douglas County. When we say ecosystem, what we really mean is a bunch of different pieces. Uh I think, think of them as gears, uh working together to, to drive the economy, human capital finance, government, community, networks and supports. There are many subpieces and sub-subpieces to this model. Uh but we're all working together to create jobs and improved quality of life. Um the OECD found that basically uh most economies have a lot of foundational firms that supply most jobs in the economy. But a very small number of firms, about six percent of firms, create over half of all net new jobs. Uh historically, economic development has fo- focused on foundational firms and recruitment and not necessarily homegrown growth firms. And I think this is really the opportunity that entrepreneurial ecosystem building tackles. Uh but there's some misconceptions. Um growth firms do not necessarily mean tech startups. Uh they're typically older than five years, less than fifty employees, and they grow all of a sudden. And it's important, if we want to help those companies grow, we need to know what they need to grow. Um and we need to know who they are before they grow because without our help, they might not. Um so they create jobs directly, but when they grow, the, they create more jobs and demand for products and services from other businesses in the community, and they invest heavily in human capital. The difficult thing about ecosystem building is there's no one size fits all approach, and it has to be very comprehensive. Um you can't just turn one gear and the machine comes to life. You really have to understand all of the gears, that's kind of step one. Then they all have to be turning together, and then we have to identify opportunities where we need new gears to be added to the, to the machinery here. Um so in order to make that happen, the OECD recommends an entre- entrepreneurial enabler organization that has public buy in, entrepreneurial expertise, resources, independence. It has to be entrepreneurial or adaptable itself. And the mandate is to get the ecosystem to a tipping point. Uh we want CORE to serve in that capacity. Um and that tipping point is basically a self sustaining ecosystem where growth firms create more firms. So as a technology firm creates expertise in a particular area, somebody might leave and go create another uh firm with uh, you know, a slightly new technological adaptation. And then as entrepreneurs create firms, they might leave and go start another one. Or they might um, you know, make money for themselves and investors, and that capital gets reinvested into more firms. Um so how do we get there? Well, first, it requires a really deep understanding about the entrepreneurial lifecycle. Uh all the ecosystem constituents have to work together in documented processes where metrics and data are captured. So we really need to understand at a fundamental level, how are we going to help entrepreneurs move through this lifecycle? I'll touch on that in a second. But it's important to note that we're not seeking to create duplicative entities or programs. We're not here to fight over turf or get credit. We just want to help entrepreneurs. We just want to fill gaps and make entrepreneurship easier in Lawrence and Douglas County. So when I talk about the entrepreneurial lifecycle, uh and, and I'll use tech as an example because that's my background. You know, it starts with a founder who has an idea that needs a mentor and then early stage employees and, and eventually investors. Um and the, the, what they're driving towards in these early stages is to get to this very important market validation step where it becomes easier to raise outside capital to grow. And that's the kind of fun part of, of tech. Uh you know, um entrepreneurship when this happens, but this part is really hard. And I'm sure this is as well, but this, this is the do or die stuff. Where if, if we don't help entrepreneurs in our community, get the assets, the resources they need to get to this market validation stage, they, the entrepreneur moves or the company dies. And so it's important to understand that lifecycle, number one. But it's also important to understand that these needs vary by stage and sector. Um you know, what I need as a software entrepreneur is not the same as what somebody creating a pharmaceutical or somebody running, you know, a local restaurant, a real uh retail business needs. We all need different things, but we have to understand that uh by stage and sector. Then we need an entrepreneurial inventory, programs and networks of experts. Uh again, understood by these factors, and we need to help entrepreneurs move through the lifecycle. So we need to understand who they are first in order to help them, and then we need to understand what they need. Uh in the middle of last year, we had this kickoff event where we started documenting our assets and our gaps. Uh we, we grouped those into four areas. We need to connect ecosystem constituents, create our pipeline, cultivate uh established and growing businesses and then celebrate our successes. I won't go through the details here. Uh it's quite a lot, but that resulted in this timeline. As I mentioned, we've been in a strategy phase, kind of all volunteer. We've been meeting weekly or biweekly and many times in between for a year and a half. You know, ten, twenty plus people have put in hundreds of hours to uh, to pull this together. I'm really proud of our work to date. Um but now we need to go operationalize it, uh you know, phase by phase. And again, it's a, it's a ten year project. Um so where we're at right now, we need to develop a KPI roadmap. We need to raise some funding so that it's not just an all volunteer effort. Uh in particular, when Britt mentioned the city's uh strategic plan, we're mapping our KPIs to your KPIs so that um there's alignment there. Anybody that we partner with in Lawrence and Douglas County, we, we certainly, our view is we want to be marching in the same direction. Uh so that we're not, you know, again, tripping over each other or heading, you know, accidentally in, in conflict. Now, we need to create a resource guide and ecosystem map that involves ser- surveying entrepreneurs and collecting service provider and, and uh info. We need to serve twenty plus entrepreneurs. Part of that will be through a mentor program, and then we need to celebrate our successes at the end of the year. So um a lot, uh you know, now we're diving into metrics. Um but that's kind of um, that's where we're at right now and where we're heading in twenty twenty two.
Thanks, Kyle.
Sure thing. Thank you, guys.
Um and now I'd like to ask Kevin Kelly if he would talk about the Crunch Entrepreneurship Support Center that he's been working very hard at, at Peaslee.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to uh, to talk about the Crunch. Um we're referring it as the Business Igniter and Phototyping Center because incubation sounds slow to me. Uh so our idea is to uh get people going and get um, get, help support businesses uh in our, in our, in Lawrence. Um we're not waiting to finish the fiscal center. Uh to do that, we are working with a number of local businesses, both existing and startup at this time uh in several different ways. Uh some kind of exciting ones in the area of uh energy production, uh in the area of uh fuel cell technologies and um, and hydrogen production. Uh so we see that this is a uh opportunity to support people that want to make things. We aren't going to help people that want to start a restaurant because we don't have that uh expertise. Uh we're not going to do tech startups because we don't know how to do it. But what we do know is how to make things. We know how to machine things, how to weld them, how to wire them, how to make things go. And one of our keys for this, and one of our, our, our great motivations for this uh developing uh this center is the um major supply chain distributions of many of our local companies based during the pandemic. It, it made us so vulnerable uh by not having locally sourced items to help support the major manufacturers in our county. So our target, one of our targets in this process uh is, is through uh ongoing relationships is to determine uh types of things that could be made in Lawrence that aren't and that could support our, our larger local businesses that need a, a better supply chain approach. Um and so while officially, March twenty ninth will be our ribbon cutting, you'll all be invited. Uh the uh, the project is, is quite low along the way in terms of, of the fiscal space. Uh but the projects are, are way ahead of the fiscal space. Uh there's some very exciting new things that are coming out of, out of this um program. And, and I wanted to express my thanks to the city for providing managing funds to help us get this off the ground. Uh it, it will be um, and we, we have a pretty ambitious goal to work with at least fifty companies throughout twenty twenty two in our area. Um we're actually currently about eleven. So it's not as um, not as far of a stretch as it sounds. And um, and so uh we, we will um provide updates as they come. But hopefully you'll read about some, you'll see some of the new companies in the paper that are, are coming through this, including some that were uh done in partnership that were initially commercialized. Uh began commercialization through uh KU Innovation uh Park uh and, and through other sources in, in the area, uh Small Business Development Center. And now they're at a net, another step where um they need uh some of those additional supports like Kyle talked about. Uh we have, actually have like uh, you know, all, they'll have small spaces where they're starting a company that can be their space for the, for their work. They'll have a generalized office space that uh is available uh to, to any of, of the people that participate in this. They'll have a generalized office space that is available to any of the people that participate in this. We're built, we have built and are equipping a 3D printing lab and a multimedia studio so that they can make the videos or the commercials for their new companies. And so that's that's where we're at with this project. It's really, really close to being done. Every day, something new happens. I would share a little something from as to how this project was done with the support from the city. Also, it became a project for Peaslee Tech. So our AutoCAD students drew up the plans, our welding students built the window frames, our carpentry students framed it, our electricians wired it, all, you know, remodel type of things, no major outdoor construction or anything like that. But it's been a good project for for Peaslee and and I think we have a lot of ownership from the folks who have worked on it. Look forward to seeing you all at a ribbon cutting next month. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if you like. I and Porter, did you have a video that to run? Just a little quick update on Peaslee Tech?
Yes, I do.
Well, let's let's hit them with that. Thank you. Okay, so James Earl Jones isn't going to worry about losing narrating jobs to the guy that narrated that, but but anyway, if you thought, well, that is an advertising for me, you'd be exactly right. That was a that is for TikTok. It is under 30 seconds and it's made for, you know, 16 to 28 year old minds. So but anyway, again, I appreciate the opportunity to give you a little update on what's going on as it relates to the Economic Development Strategic Plan and our participation in it and would be glad to answer any questions, my dear.
Thank you so much, Kevin and Kyle and Mayor and Commissioners. I think we'll all be open to any questions that you might have.
Mayor Shipley, are there any questions from Commissioners?
Commissioner Finkel, I first thank you for that great report. And thanks for all the work you're doing as well as Kyle and Kevin. I know you guys are doing great work too. Very excited about a lot of that. Just a couple of questions, maybe on, you know, where we go from here. You know, one of the examples is, you know, we've talked about this a couple of times recently is industrial lots and looking at the next industrial poke. Can you give us an update on like, what is the next step on that? What's the, where are we going from there?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Finkel, this is Britt Crumkin, Economic Development Director. That is one of our priorities for 2022. All of these will probably need to be taken in steps. For this, that particularly one, we are going to need to get together with other departments to find and evaluate, find out and identify which lots are underutilized, which ones would be best for development, and then also what we need. More than likely, once we have went through all that, well, we'll be generating an RFP out to the development community to see if they would be interested in these projects. More also, more than likely, we'll have to offer some kind of an incentive package. So it's going to take a bit of footwork, but that footwork is going to start this year in that particular arena.
Commissioner Finkel, I thank you for that. And I knew I know we had a new position that you might be hiring for. We we authorized it last year. Have you you got some help yet?
Yes, Commissioner Finkel, this is Britt Crumkin again. Yes, I'm very happy to announce that Sam Camp was just hired yesterday. He's come on board with us. I think he might even be reviewing this presentation, but I'm extremely excited to have him on as our Economic Development Analyst. You will probably see him involved in some of our strategy work as well. So we've we've desperately needed some additional bodies working on economic development. And Sam is coming to us from Florida. He has a graduate, both an undergraduate and a graduate degree in public administration. And he's worked for county, city, county and federal governments. So he's got an interesting perspective, I think, in terms of coming on board. He's also done a lot of policy evaluation when it comes to economic development policy. And that's another thing I think we'll be looking at this year is taking a closer look at our economic development policy and seeing what we would suggest moving, what direction we need to move in that, where gaps are. Does it align with our strategic plans and that sort of thing? So I am delighted to have Sam on board.
Commissioner Finkel, I'm well excited to especially have to have some more help and so look forward to meeting Sam. Last question for me is you talked about the business survey or the business climate survey. Is that going to be a like a randomly sampled survey sort of thing or be more of a more of a Lawrence Listen sort of survey type? I mean, is it going to be scientifically valid or is it going to be more of a whatever? Tell us what you think sort of survey.
Yes, Britt Crumkin, Economic Development Director. Yes, we're actually utilizing the same professional survey team that we use for the City Satisfaction Survey. So ETC is the name of the company and we've been working with them on coming up with a draft survey that is oriented just to the business environment here in in Lawrence. Again, we've never done this type of thing before. We think it's vital that we start communicating with our business community and this is one way of doing it. It will be scientifically valid and we expect that we're it's in the process right now of being drafted and refined. But we expect that to go forward before too long this year.
This is Vice Mayor Larson. I had a question about the, what are your slides, PES3, which was the Target Industry Employment Growth slide? And you had in there, the target was to create 300 jobs annually where the average salary is at least 500 or $5,000 above the current median wage of 33,382. Is that wage, is that considered to be a living wage, a livable wage? Is that based on that or is that just the median income in this in the county?
That is the median income in, I believe, Lawrence. And this metric is coming from the chamber. This is what they're going to be tracking. So we wanted to align with that as well. We certainly can track additional things, but this is their metric. I think they're aiming for a five year time period, but it breaks down to 300 new jobs annually of which the average salary is at least 5,000 above the current median. So we'll we'll be tracking the median salary, the median wage every year as well. So we'll see how that compares. But this is their metric that we are also using.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Britt. Appreciate that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Lieutenant Larson, just one more question on the on the business ownership rate, the for women and minorities. You said you're using a database called Data Axel. Is that what is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
And go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Britt Crumkin, Economic Development Director. Yes, this is a very robust database where they are, they just extensively interview businesses and seek information from businesses throughout the United States, but then it's also specific to communities. So I'm able to pull very detailed data on these businesses down to the point where I can actually find things like who the owner is in case we would want to at some point want to do any kind of outreach program. What kind of ownership it is, what kind of, again, ethnicity or gender. We can look at how many employees they have, their approximate payroll, their approximate annual sales. So it's got an incredible amount of data. This particular database was chosen because it provides so much flexibility for us to look at this data and our working groups to look at this data and it it provides what we need. Like I said, if we wanted to do outreach programs or something like that, we have that capability with this data. And the other thing that I really like about it is they do have, they have both verified and unverified records. I'm pulling this data only on the verified records. The verified records means that they have made a phone call to that business within the last 12 months to verify that the data is accurate. And so what you're looking at is is not the entire slice of businesses in Lawrence, but those that are actually verified.
Thank you, Britt. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, Vice Mayor Larson. I appreciate it. Sorry to cut in on you there. And thank you, Britt, for your presentation as well as Kyle and Kevin. I really do appreciate it and I look forward to hearing more about both of them. I had a question, kind of piggybacking on what Vice Mayor Larson said regarding to, I believe it was PES5, women and minority businesses. Are any sort of special accommodations being made or to take into account that, you know, not a lot of those, you know, this particular businesses would have a lot of startup capital? Or they might be non traditional businesses? Any sort of way that we can help them get off the ground?
Yes, this is Britt Crumkin, Economic Development Director. One of the reasons why we kind of wanted to piggyback on the same metric as the chamber is because they are specifically focusing on resources to help women and minority owned businesses grow and create more within the community. So that's one of the reasons why, like I said, we want to kind of take a look at their metrics as well. They are, I believe, starting a revolving loan program for women and minority owned businesses. So we're going to be looking at how many they have have helped throughout each year and more details on that as well. Again, that's kind of the boots on the ground. That's the work that is actually taking place here locally to help support this type of initiative that may not be reflected in the bigger metric that you're seeing when it comes to the overall ownership rates that you're looking at. That's still important. I'm able to pull those overarching rates for our peer communities. It's always interesting to kind of see where we stack up against them. Whereas we couldn't do that with the leading data, it would be probably very hard to compare apples to apples what we're doing, what the boots on the ground groups are doing versus what their local groups are doing. So that's why I prefer to kind of look at data from both sides, if you will.
Could I just add one point there, Britt, if you don't mind? I think it's really important to understand that if we're looking to help entrepreneurs, women and minority owned and minority owned businesses probably especially that this is that we need to be in the trenches with entrepreneurs. We need to know them. We need to know who wants to be an entrepreneur. We need to know what kind of entrepreneur. Again, this goes back to my, you know, just harping on stage and sector, you know, and nauseam. We just, we need to know what they aspire to be and if they are already an entrepreneur, what they aspire for their business. And we just need to move heaven and earth to make that happen. That's how we'll help them succeed. And that's how our ecosystem will grow and and become, I think, a better place for entrepreneurs to thrive.
Commissioner Littlejohn, thank you, Kyle, and thank you, Britt. Appreciate that.
Any other comments from Commissioners or questions? Not see anything. Let's see if there's some public comment on this. Sheri, is there anyone there in the audience would like to comment on this?
No, Mayor.
All right. I do see Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I was just wondering, when it comes to like women owned businesses, what exactly does the city consider like a woman, like would a trans woman be considered, like if a business is owned by a trans woman, would that be, would the city consider that a woman owned business? So I, I think I might have asked something like this before, so I'm not sure if I I'm just forgetting. But I think if 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 there are things being offered to to women, I think trans women should be eligible for that. And I just wondering if if the city agrees with that or if if the city's a bunch of turfs. Thank you.
Sheri, or is there anyone else on the Zoom who's interested in public comment on this item?
Yes, Ron Geishas. No, okay. No one else has indicated they wish to speak there.
All right. Thank you. Mayor Shipley, any discussion or further comments from the Commission on this?
This is Commissioner Sellers. I wanted to echo the sentiments of the other Commissioners and thank you, Britt, for putting this presentation together. This was wonderful and as well as Kyle for presenting on core. I know I've been tracking the work that you and the team have been doing with that as well as with Kevin at Peaslee and with Crunch. And I look forward to that ribbon cutting, seeing that, seeing the work that was started with the students out there and what they've been doing with that project. So we have a lot of the spirit of entrepreneurship is very active and and we're getting it to a point where it's thriving. So I do appreciate that. Just a couple of points to some things that I know that Kyle said as well as what Britt said. Britt, and I guess my first question, first thought is with Britt in regards to that prior into our priority around the industrial building out our, sorry, I'm trying to roll my notes here, roll my PowerPoint here. With the new capital investments and looking at development in the industrial parks. With the release of the Spark Dollars in regards to base, are we actively pursuing those dollars in order to help elevate work around that priority task that you're you're working on? Is there an opportunity here? Sorry.
I'm actually going to let, I see Diane Stoddard has has joined us and she is really heading up the efforts to apply for those grants. So I, if she doesn't mind, I'd like to turn that over to her and let her talk a little bit more about that.
Hi, Diane Stoddard, Assistant City Manager. I will report that we are working on a couple of applications for the base grant and are also really encouraged that there's a number of of our partner organizations that are pursuing base grants. We specifically do intend on submitting a grant that would help better prepare some of our lots in Lawrence Venture Park for immediate development. So this would include some removal of some foundations that we have on on one of the lots. Rough grading of some lots and tree removal and things like that. That would would kind of be a package related to Venture Park. And we also have a a water line improvement that is related to capacity within the park that we think would also be important and reflect the goals that the state has set for this fund.
This is Commissioner Sellers. Thank you, Diane.
Commissioner Sellers, thank you Diane and thank you Britt. And Britt, the other, another point, I know you had talked about the, um, business survey and I know that we're looking at the metrics with, uh, the chamber as well as, uh, through the strategic plan. And I think just to echo some of the sentiments, um, from Commissioner Littlejohn is just ensuring that through the deployment of that survey, that since we've outlined a strategic point around, you know, elevating and encouraging and, and pouring into women and minority owned businesses, that we, um, ensure that those voices are heard and that we are intentional um, about ensuring that their voices, that their surveys are completed. And I know that what that may look like around engagement and, and with your office, but I would like, you know, you know, oftentimes in these things, we have to go above and, and beyond. And I definitely don't want to see us stretch ourselves for, you know, capacity wise. But if this is something that is important and, you know, I firmly believe, we all believe this is important to get us to the next stages of how we grow our, our entrepreneurial ecosystem here, that we ensure that those voices, um, are heard through that survey, so.
Yeah, this is Britt Kremkano, Economic Development Director. I think that is a very timely remark, Commissioner Sellers. We are in the middle of crafting the, the draft survey and certainly things like that are important for us to hear so that we can include, uh, information from that survey that's going to get to that point a little bit more. So we as staff and our partners who are involved in drafting this survey will definitely be discussing that aspect of it as well.
This is Commissioner Sellers. My, um, last point, and it was to, um, to both Kyle and Kevin, whoever wants to answer. Kyle, you brought up in your presentation about, you know, filling the gap with subject matter experts. And I know that oftentimes when we're looking at growing our, the entrepreneurial ecosystem, whether it's K U I P, uh, what Kevin's doing at, at Peaslee Tech, it's more of that bio-science, biotech industry. Do you feel like we, as far as that inventory of subject matter experts or content matter experts, where are we lacking or not lacking, where there's opportunities for us to, to fill some of those low level areas?
Yeah, that's a great question. This is Kyle Johnson again. Um, well, I think step one is, um, always to identify who's around to be helped, right? Who needs help? And then aligning our expertise around those businesses, those entrepreneurs. So, um, I guess what I mean by that is, you know, my, my company's in the ad tech data space, right? Um, if we don't have a bunch of companies in the ad tech data space, then we don't need a bunch of subject matter experts to help out because there's nobody there to help out. Um, but if we do have a bunch of those kinds of companies, then that should be an immediate focus area, I believe, for us. And we just need to, you know, I've, um, social media is an important tool, uh, especially when you're building a technology company. You know, I've built a network of subject matter experts from around the country, um, in that space. You know, that, that expertise isn't local, um, or at least not very much of it. Um, so we can apply that same approach to any of the industries that we need to help. Uh, whether that is, um, now, again, my expertise, uh, isn't in traditional local business. Uh, I, I, I know tech and software, but the same approach applies to any kind of business. We need to know first who needs help, what are they working on? Okay, where are you stuck? Um, and then if it's, if it's mentoring, if it's capital, if it's, uh, you know, access to supply partners or customers or whatever, then we can, we can help. Uh, but we've, we first have to know who's our target audience and what do they need and how can we help? So I think that business survey is critical. Um, you know, I'll be, I'll be really interested in it and, you know, I'll talk to Britt offline about, um, the scope of that, uh, because I think that, that that's going to highlight areas where we can start to grow those subject matter expert networks. And again, that's not hard if we know who needs help and, and on what project. You know, I can, uh, you know, lead some LinkedIn training classes on how to go cast out a net to find some subject matter experts, but, uh, it, we have a lot of people in the community who can open doors to their networks and we can just make that a focus. Um, so I think we just have to know who we're trying to help first and, and what they need.
And I'd say, uh, from, uh, the, from the type of, uh, companies that we're focusing on helping, uh, we are actually, um, very fortunate that we have a number of subject matter experts right in our area and, uh, in terms of building and making, uh, things. But I think that, and, and as we engage more, uh, people with more business ideas, we're, we're going to find out, okay, we need more subject matter experts in other areas or we need to, uh, have people maybe from other parts of the country that we bring in to, you know, to contact it, uh, to help. We've done in, in, in our work on, on, on building these concepts and on the economic development strategic plan. We worked, uh, we've had contact with people from other communities that are doing this. So, and when we're starting to build a library of potential, uh, experts outside of our immediate area that could help folks when they're, want to start.
And there really is like, at, at least in tech, you know, um, it's a long list, you know, fintech, agtech, adtech, big data, clean tech, you know, bio of all sorts, you know, medical devices, pharmaceuticals. This is a, that, that gets big in a hurry. Um, so that's just tech. And then there's local businesses and, and, and then, you know, Kevin's focused more on manufacturing and, um, those kinds of, uh, technical skills. Um, so that's why that, you know, step one, I think is assess who needs help and on what. And then I think step two becomes now where do we want to strategically build out, uh, clusters? You know, K U I P is certainly building out clusters in a couple of different areas. That's great. Uh, where else do we need to add clusters? I believe one is software because, uh, it, the entry cost for that is lower. Um, so it requires less initial investment. But, um, these are all longer discussions that we can get into, um, you know, another time.
Any, uh, Mayor Shipley, any further comments or questions?
Uh, Commissioner Littlejohn, uh, that actually just spurred a thought. Um, how are you guys, uh, Kyle and Kevin, how are you guys with, uh, having a presence in, uh, uh, local high schools and, uh, and, uh, with partnerships with K U I P or with K U or universities? Like, you know, K U or Haskel in general, uh, because that software comment just made me think that I, it's just the technical literacy of, uh, young, young people today. It's just so much more than it was before that that might not be as big a leap for them, so.
No, absolutely. Great question. Um, kids, uh, you know, high school students, middle school students, college students are now digital natives. Uh, they grew up with the internet. Uh, if they understand anything, it's software, you know? Um, now often they need business problems to go apply the, that software knowledge to. And, and they've used software all their lives, but they don't necessarily know how to design and build software. So it's really important that we build multiple pipelines with our universities, uh, you know, and, and local, uh, K through 12 schools. Um, in particular, we need to teach them how to, and I, and I'm literally having a session tomorrow with the K U Entrepreneurship Club. In fact, um, a four-part series this semester with the E Club, uh, in partnership with Launch Lawrence, where I mentor, you know, uh, tech entrepreneurs or people who want to be tech entrepreneurs. And going through, okay, first of all, how do you identify an idea? How then do you measure the viability of that idea, you know, quickly and simply, uh, without spinning your wheels and spending, you know, forever on the wrong thing, which is a common problem for a first time entrepreneur? Um, you know, and so what are the step one, two, three, four, five, six to quickly, uh, so, uh, I guess I identify a problem. How do you identify a problem? How do you then start to tackle it as an entrepreneur would? Um, the problem right now is I need, I need more, more students in the classroom. Uh, because I can only be so many places. Um, and that's why I think Core can really be helpful to my efforts in Launch Lawrence. Instead of having to market and go kind of like club to club, you know, maybe Core could help, you know, uh, put not just me, but other entrepreneurs with different expertise in front of these clubs, you know, in a way where I'm not necessarily doing the marketing and the outreach and the coordination and everything, but an entrepreneur can just, you know, that Core could help facilitate those connections and an entrepreneur can just show up and work through exercises. And that, that kind of, and that's what I mean by kind of being in the trenches. Once we start to build those relationships between current entrepreneurs and would be entrepreneurs, those would be entrepreneurs are going to learn 10 times faster than they ever would have on their own. Uh, that's also often how, uh, longer term mentoring relationships happen. Also sometimes investor opportunities happen. Uh, sorry, my dog is now excited that folks are home. Um, but yeah, the, um, I, I have talked to USD 497. Um, that was maybe two years ago or 18 months ago. We kind of had to get our ducks in a row, Core did. Um, but now we're to that point where we need to, uh, re-engage, uh, not just the school district, but a lot of different areas to now document those processes. How do we help your high school students? They need to be able to raise their hand, identify themselves as a would be entrepreneur. And then content just comes flooding at those would be entrepreneurs. So.
Uh, Kim and Kelly, piece of the tech, Commissioner Littlejohn, um, good question. We've been, uh, thinking about that as part of the process in, in, in opening, uh, the Crunch and that we're fortunate that we have, uh, kind of a captive audience. We have 120 high school students daily, uh, in, in the facility. And our plan is to begin creating opportunities to introduce them to the kinds of things that, uh, entrepreneurs are, are doing or, or building or working on, uh, at Peaslee. And also then for adult students to involve them, uh, for example, if we have someone that's wanting to, uh, build a welded product of some sort, well, we introduce an AutoCAD student to them to help them, uh, draw them up and a welding student to help build it. And, and at the same time then we're exposing that student, whether an adult or high school student. Uh, we're exposing them to entrepreneurship and, and we think it's an opportunity to make them get, you know, a, a lot of people, myself included, that have started and run businesses. It's because we look at somebody else doing it and go, hey, I could maybe do that, you know? So, uh, so they, I think we have some really great opportunities with, with youth, uh, which is really where our big pipeline for entrepreneurs has to be.
Commissioner Littlejohn, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Shipley, again, thank you everyone. If there's no other comments, I might suggest, um, commissioners have been at this a little bit longer than everyone else. Um, so I might suggest just a five minute break because we do have several items, uh, left after this. So, um, unless the commissioners have a, an issue, I would, would suggest we return it at seven forty-five. So unless the commissioners have a, an issue, I would, would suggest we return at, at seven forty-five.
And our plan is to begin creating opportunities to introduce them to the kinds of things that entrepreneurs are, are doing or, or building or working on at Peaslee. And also then for adult students to involve them. For example, if we have someone that's wanting to build a welded product of some sort. Well, we introduce the AutoCAD student to them to help them draw them up and a welding student to help build it. And, and at the same time then we're exposing that student, whether an adult or high school student. We're exposing them to entrepreneurship. And, and we think it's an opportunity to make them get, you know, a lot of people, myself included, that have started running businesses. It's because we look at somebody else doing it and go, hey, I could maybe do that. You know, so, so I think we have some really great opportunities with, with youth. Which is really where our big pipeline for entrepreneurs has to be.
Commissioner Littlejohn, thank you guys. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor Shipley, again, thank you, everyone. If there's no other comments, I might suggest. Commissioners have been at this a little bit longer than everyone else. So I might suggest just a five minute break because we do have several items left after this. So unless the commissioners have a, an issue, I would, would suggest we return at, at seven forty-five.